Good evening and welcome to this evening's committee of the whole. It is April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the time is seven P M. At this time, we have two items on our agenda this evening for the committee of the whole. We will begin this evening with our Rolling Meadows Library Strategic Plan. And this strategic plan has been in the works for quite some time, and we are lucky to have our executive director, Jack Bauer of the library here this evening to walk us through the results of that strategic plan for us this evening.
Great, thank you, Mayor Sanoika, and please forgive me, I'm somewhat recovering from a cold, so hopefully I don't have to clear my throat too many times. But thank you, City Council, thank you staff, too. As a reminder, well, Mayor Sanoika just said, I'm Jack Bauer, I'm the executive director of the Rolling Meadows Library, and thank you guys for giving me the time tonight to go over our strategic planning process and the outcome of that. I'm very excited to share it with you. So last year, in preparing to interview for the Rolling Meadows Library for the director position, one of the most pressing needs I identified was the absence of a strategic plan. After being hired, I was encouraged to learn that both the mayor and city council shared this perspective and had already suggested the library undertake such a process. We are also fortunate to have a library board that is recognizing of that, too, and very supportive in this effort. So after I began in May last year, getting the ball rolling on the strategic plan was one of my top priorities. So what is a strategic plan briefly, for those of you who aren't familiar with the term? At its core, a strategic plan is a structured process that helps an organization define its direction, set goals, and determine how to allocate resources effectively to achieve those goals. It ensures that we're not just reacting to change, but actively shaping our future in response to the needs of Rolling Meadows. Because the library had not conducted a formal strategic planning process in the past, I recommended we bring in an outside firm, excuse me, there I go clearing my voice, to guide the process, both to ensure sound methodology and to provide an impartial lens. After reviewing proposals from multiple firms, we selected library strategies and experienced firm out of Saint Paul, Minnesota, they're actually part of the Saint, Friends of the Saint Paul Public Library, to lead us through this work. And after selecting the firm, we officially began the strategic planning process in August of twenty twenty four. The first step of this process was assembling a strategic planning steering committee. This group included library trustees, staff, and diverse range of community members. I'd like to especially thank Rob, our city manager, and Dr. Nieves, the director of human services, for participating in that steering committee that was very, very helpful. We also had excellent representation from the Rolling Meadows High School, Kimball Hill Elementary, the Park District, and the Chamber of Commerce. And this committee played an important role in reviewing data, referring community members, and providing early feedback during the plan development. A strong strategic plan requires a foundation of data. With the help of our consultants, we analyze key information about Rolling Meadows and its demographics, but even more critically was the community input portion. So I want to just talk about how we gathered all this data to go into our strategic plan So we made a comprehensive and intentional effort to gather feedback from residents and community stakeholders. In October, from October second to November eighth, we launched a community-wide survey available in English, Spanish, and Polish, both in print and online. We promoted it widely through social media, email, community partners, including the city, thank you for promoting that, and even receiving coverage in the Daily Herald. Actually, when the reporter called me about our asbestos abatement, I made sure to have him commit to posting about our survey, it was like at the same time, and they sure enough did, so there was a silver lining there. The response was really good. Our consultants require at least a one percent of our service population to consider it a representative survey, and as you can see with seven hundred sixty-seven responses, we had over three percent of Rolling Meadows responding, so we were really happy with that response rate. The core questions of the survey focused on satisfaction with three key areas. First, library operations, art collection and resources, and then also our programs, events, and outreach. While we were pleased to see many areas of strength, we focused most on areas with the lower satisfaction, so the final plan could address those things directly. So as you can see here, the highest amount of dissatisfaction was with our website, and then going down was our children's area, which we were actually working on at the time, and I think have addressed a lot of those concerns. Then after that, we have awareness of library services, online catalog, restrooms, and then the overall facility. In addition to the survey, we hosted five focus groups, and we got over, or we got forty-seven participants total, and we had one focus group at the Neighborhood Resource Center in Spanish as well. These sessions allowed us to go deeper, ask follow-up questions, and explore community needs in a more nuanced ways than just, you know, Q and A on a survey. Our consultants also conducted one-on-one interviews with Mayor Sanoika and City Manager Sabo to ensure we captured city leadership perspective as well. The focus groups used kind of a funneled approach where first we would ask broad questions about the Rolling Meadows community, and then we would narrow more down on the library itself and specific services. Then lastly, we also conducted staff surveys and held staff focus groups and library board trustee focus groups. This not only helped us gain insights from those who were closest with the library and know the operations best, but it also fostered early engagement with the plan and buy-in, which is really important for a strategic plan as well. And while the consultants were in town conducting our focus groups, I gave them a full tour of the library and Rolling Meadows itself. We also reviewed key documents and operational details to ensure they had a thorough understanding of our context and needs. And then with this input, we developed a draft strategic plan. We took that to the steering committee that we assembled to provide some final input, and then on January eighth, the plan was formally approved by the library board. So in your packets, you have the actual plan, we have that posted on our website, so I'm going to briefly go through each of the goals and the specific strategies to meet those goals now. So this is our twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven strategic plan. It's a focused three-year roadmap. We intentionally kept the timeline manageable so we can act on our goals promptly and ensure meaningful progress within a realistic timeframe. So I'm going to give an overview, like I said, of each of those goals and the strategies, and then I'll walk you through kind of what we're looking at for twenty twenty-five, how we're implementing this plan and what we've done so far. So let's get started. So our first goal is our programs and partnerships goal, which is to extend the library's reach and impact through strategic partnerships and in-demand programs. And so each of these goals has several strategies to meet it. So the first strategy for this goal one is to diversify adult programming with a particular emphasis on opportunities, which center culture and language and offerings that hold intergenerational appeal. The next strategy for this goal is to foster and expand strategic community partnerships across both the public and private sectors. Then we also have to position the library as a versatile education hub for young patrons from infants to teens. The next strategy is to provide more volunteer opportunities inside and outside the library, including engagement pathways that do not require English language fluency. We also have the strategy to coordinate larger-scale, family-oriented community events, positioned to increase the library's visibility and reach within the community. And then lastly, for this first goal, we have to reevaluate programming to ensure that days and times conform with the scheduling needs of the targeted audiences that those programs are intended for. And if you have any questions throughout, please just let me know, we can also answer those towards the end as well. Our second goal is our collections and resources goal, which is to align Rolling Meadows Library, what we offer, with the community's current and emerging needs. So we already do have a really, I think, impressive Spanish-language collection, but this first strategy is to continuing that investment in that collection and prioritize its promotion so we get the most use out of it. The next strategy is to increase the availability of non-traditional resources, including the loanable library of things and onsite maker space style amenities. Hopefully, if you've visited the library recently, you might have noticed our new library of things collection, where you can check out materials that you might not normally associate with the library, like technology, hotspots, Rokus, board games, and that sort of thing. So to continue to develop that collection is a definite priority in that strategy. Next, we have to invest in the library's online discovery tools through a website redesign and improvements to app functionality. And then also, lastly, we have to pinpoint and address imbalances between what patrons want and what is available to them from Rolling Meadows Library and the possibilities of joining a library consortium. I'll talk about that a little bit later, some more. The next goal is our facility and accessibility goal, which is to consciously and authentically position the library as a welcoming and accessible space for everyone. So the first strategy for this goal is to conduct a facility needs assessment to understand and begin sequencing needed reinvestments in the aging library facility. So we've continually, you know, made improvements to the building, for instance, this week, actually, we're starting to install a new roof, and it's a wonderful building, the structure is excellent, but I do think from our community survey, we found some feedback from the community, especially being kind of nestled in between really modern libraries like Schaumburg, Palatine, and Arlington Heights. You know, compared to those, the interior of our building is a little dated, and we're looking at ways we can maybe improve that. That's what that facility needs assessment would help address. The second strategy is to equip meeting rooms with up-to-date, collaboration-friendly technology for educational, recreational, and work-related purposes. The next strategy after that is to explore the incorporation of convenient self-service touchpoints into Rolling Meadows Library, Rolling Meadow Library's existing service models. We're also going to revisit library policies and procedures to ensure all of those reflect and foster a welcoming atmosphere. Three point five is to update and diversify wayfinding signage and other interior visuals. Three point six is to promote and expand home delivery services for residents physically unable to visit the library. And now, we already do have a home delivery program for homebound residents, but really looking to expand that and publicize that as much as we can to get the most use out of it. And then three point seven is explore the rollout of non-traditional physical access points around the community, such as perhaps hold pickup kiosks or drop boxes where people can return their materials. The fourth goal is our marketing and outreach goal, which is to increase community awareness around the value and versatility of the library. The first strategy for that is to prioritize outreach into underserved pockets of the community. The next strategy is to develop a broad-based marketing plan to guide our promotional efforts. The next strategy after that is to craft and distribute key messaging in languages other than English. And I do want to reiterate, we have been doing many of these things on this strategic plan already, but it's really excellent to use this to show that these are things we prioritize, we want to continue to prioritize. So just because we have something on here doesn't mean we haven't been doing it, but it's really focusing on those sort of things and reaffirming that they are priorities of the community. The next strategy for this goal is to refresh the library's online presence, including the website and all relevant social media channels. And then four point five is to adopt continual feedback mechanisms to gather input from community members on an ongoing basis and not just when we're doing our strategic planning. Then the final goal is our administration and staff goal, which is to equip staff and board members to advance Rolling Meadow Library's mission and advocate for its place in the fabric and future of our Rolling Meadows community. The first strategy for that is for our board to regularly engage in training to ensure all members fully understand the library's vision and feel confident in championing its mission. The next strategy is to work towards increasing staff diversity, including volunteer and internship opportunities. After that, we have five point three, invest in staff cross-training in select areas to increase cross-departmental understanding and foster a nimble frontline team. Then we have to provide periodic customer service training to increase staff confidence when interacting with any patron and in a wide range of scenarios. Five point five is to explore pride of place and logo wear, so people can more easily identify staff, then also to potentially have identification markers, such as buttons to denote special skills like a language or some other kind of talent that a patron might benefit from knowing. Five point six is to investigate equipping public floor staff with tools to instantaneously reach colleagues from, towards an outstanding customer service experience, so we could instantaneously help patrons from across the building. Five point seven is to collaborate actively in citywide dialogue around Rolling Meadows' future growth and development. And then lastly, and a little more specifically, five point eight is to explore how best to collaborate with the city's new human services department to help connect its resources and services to all residents. So this plan is, you know, it's a nice plan to show to the community, to show to our city council, our library board will use this to evaluate our work, but actually with this plan, library staff will now use this, and for each of these strategies, we will have various different tactics to meet those strategies and actually do the work towards achieving the goals that we have set in this strategic plan. So I want to talk a little bit about what our first year in twenty twenty-five of the plan is looking like so far. So so far already, in year one of our strategic plan, we've implemented a self-checkout station, so this is something that many libraries have had for a long time. We started offering this in January, actually, I think it was early February, to be honest, but this allows patrons to, you know, use the library without necessarily needing to interact with any staff at all, which of course, we still want to have staff, there are a lot of patrons in the community really values those interactions and the help staff offers, but alternatively, there's others who probably just prefer to just come and go really quickly, and it also offers a nice privacy element that we didn't offer beforehand. So we're very happy to have that launched, and we're going to kind of evaluate how it works and see where else we might implement those throughout the library. Also, we have recently implemented online self-service room reservations, which are now available for our conference and study rooms. So this is a functionality of our new website, which I'll talk about in a minute, we're going to release later on this month, but we didn't want to wait on it, we wanted to offer that functionality as soon as it was ready, essentially. Previously, if someone wanted to reserve a meeting room, I mean, a study or a conference room, they would have to call the library or come in person to reserve it. Now through our website, people can reserve any of our four conference rooms from anywhere with an internet connection twenty-four hours a day, so I think it's much more accessible and collaboration-friendly for that matter. Also, starting in March, we offered our first partnership with the human services department here at the city with social worker drop-in hours. So we started that one in March, and we've had two, or actually, I think we're having one tomorrow in April, so there'll be two in April, and we hope to continue that throughout the year, monthly at least. And it's a really great service where, you know, we have the social worker that's near the front entrance, and then also we have a study room reserved if there are more private matters that the social worker might need to talk to with patrons, they can go into the study room and have the confidentiality they might need in that space. So we're super happy that the human services department has offered that to us, I think it's a great way of expanding the human services department's services as well. And then lastly, some other things we've implemented now are of those non-traditional services. Most recently, we started our seed library, so if you go to our reference department, we have a nice display where patrons can borrow seeds, and then hopefully the idea will be they plant them, and with their harvest, they might bring back some of those seeds, and then perhaps next year, those seeds can go to use again and that sort of thing. But it's a really excellent display, a really cool service, we're very proud of offering, so please come by and try that out. And then we're also circulating what we call their Flicks on Fire, but their new release, Amazon Fire Sticks. So basically, between a movie being in theaters and being on DVD or in streaming, more and more, there's this longer period of pay-per-use, so what we've done is we've paid for the movie, and it's loaded on these fire sticks, so people can have access to them much sooner than waiting for it to be on DVD or on streaming services. So we're really excited to launch that, too. So in progress, we have ordered a book bike, so here's a picture of a book bike, it's probably a new concept to many of you, to serve as a non-traditional physical access point, primarily for our community outreach events, and that was funded through a donation from our Friends of the Library, so we're very grateful for that. So the idea with the book bike, it's actually, it's actually a tricycle, don't tell anyone, but that doesn't have the alliteration, but it's basically a bike that has, you know, foldable shelves and materials that you can take with you, so at the different outreach opportunities that we'll engage with, especially in the warmer months at our different festivals, we'll be able to have this book bike wheeled out, and people can potentially check out materials at these festivals with their library card, so something very cool, we're excited, and then also just like maybe driving it in the parade and that sort of thing. And then also, as I mentioned, we have been working on a new website, we knew that was a priority, and we're excited to announce that that will be launching in a week from Friday on April twenty-fifth. That was definitely the biggest need that we found from our community survey, our website was outdated, is outdated, and is very close to no longer being outdated, so we're very excited for that. So after, we have our website hurdle, there's two more big projects based off the strategic plan that we're engaging in this year, and I just want to say, these are kind of the big picture ones, a lot of those strategies that you saw are just ongoing work that we're always happy and prioritizing, but these are kind of the larger projects that we have to make sure that we have the full attention to focus on. So the first part of the year, we will be doing that evaluation for a potential membership in a shared catalog library consortium. So basically, what that means is when you search for a material on our library website, right now, it just shows materials that are available at the Rolling Meadows Library. Potentially, if we were in a consortium, those materials would still be at the top, but if we didn't have a material, it would show what other libraries in the area that are in that consortium actually have that material, you could go to that library, or you could just put a hold on it, and then in a few days, it will come to our library for pickup. So it really exponentially increases the amount of materials available to our residents if we were in that, so we're just kind of evaluating if that is workable for our scenario, financially, and that sort of thing, but it's definitely a promising thing that I'm excited to explore. And then once we've kind of come to a decision on that, we will start to engage in that comprehensive facility needs assessment to identify future building updates and improvements specifically targeted towards the interiors and making sure that it's, you know, works well for our patrons, works well for our staff, and starts to get that more modern library feeling that I think our feedback from our survey showed that we, you know, don't quite have currently, but, you know, we're definitely working towards that. So like I said, that's the big picture of twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-six, we're going to be, you know, looking at the items that we haven't quite yet had the chance to address from the strategic plan and figuring out how we were going to address those in those coming years. But yeah, I just want to say, well, thank you for all of the help from the staff involved, our Board of Trustees, who's been very supportive, our partners all around the community, especially the city as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about anything further if you have any, any questions like that.
Thank you, Director Meyer. Council members, do you have any questions regarding the plan or the presentation that was presented before us this evening? Yes, Alder, Alderman Boucher.
I just want to say, I really think Jack has done a great job. He came in knowing this had to be done, and it is already completed, and you've been here just to...
Just a little on your year in May, yeah.
And he took a board who I don't think many have sat through doing a SOAR and doing a strategic plan and really got them going in a direction that was productive, so I just want to say, sitting in those meetings and watching this whole process, that you've done a really good job getting this up and going in, in less than a year, so.
Thank you.
Great to hear, and also for the community, so that they're aware, Alderman Boucher is a representative of the city council on the library board, so while we are conducting city business, we have a separate library board that is appointed by the mayor, and Alderman Boucher is able to provide updates to us and the council, and we have had some updates as well from this process, and it sounded like it was marching along very, very well, and we're glad to see that it came to fruition here, as you said, in under a year's time, which is great. Any, yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos. It's not a specific question, just I'm sure it's the top of your mind as well as your boards is when it comes to budget planning. It was, I don't think there's any big, big technical items, which is probably why they were taking care of this year, just I know we talked during your budget presentation last year, the last couple of years, it's pretty much the max. years, it's pretty much the max of, we're just obviously, it's probably top of everybody's mind, but just reenacting that.
Sure, absolutely.
Budget impact and things like that. Following Stephanie's thoughts, kudos on coming and getting this done, because it was certainly muted, and it's exciting to see.
And I think really the bulk of these, 95% of them have a very, very minimal budgeting impact. That facility needs assessment, we might have some, you know, other bigger ticket items and that sort of thing to request to consider, but the rest of, the rest of the plan is really, I think, pretty budget neutral relatively.
Perfect, thank you.
So Alderman O'Brien, to work off of your comment, would, for that particular objective, excuse me, or that strategy, are you interested in seeing maybe a more comprehensive capital plan from the library than we've seen in the past?
Just to get the timeline, I just wanted to think the budget process would start when it comes last year, October, November, for the city or for the library? I think last year was 5% levy increase on just the library portion, the previous year was 5%. I know we talked about that during the budget process. So maybe highlights of a capital plan, but just from an awareness perspective versus potentially a 5% increase, 5% increase, yeah.
Separate from tax levying, from a planning perspective, to make sure that as part of that building assessment, are you excited to be able to see a long-term project plan? So outside of the funding component, what are, what is the priority as far as capital when it comes to this?
Yeah, I think it's true. And we can help put the hype out there, too.
Does the strategic plan at this point list any specifics with regards to that building assessment, or just right now?
Oh, so right now, it's in the very early stages. I will say, we do have, and I probably do need to kind of update it a little bit, but we do have a capital plan for, you know, we had a facilities, what would you call it? Engineering assessment more like, which was really more looking at the health of the building, making sure the different systems were up to date and working, and that's why we're replacing the roof, because it was determined it was at the end of its useful life. However, that part where we were talking about the facility needs assessment, oftentimes those are kind of combined, but since we had done that other evaluation of our, sorry, I just said the word, now I'm forgetting it, but our engineering assessment, there we go, it would really be more towards kind of the like, you know, interior updating potentially, and like I was saying, that is in its infancy, but as we develop that, that would certainly be something that would have, you know, kind of more comprehensive, laid out, phasing and potential, you know, costs and that sort of thing outlined. Very early now to really say much about it at all. Towards the end of this year, you know, and actually probably around budget time, I will have some more information for that, but, you know, it's definitely a longer term plan as well than just for 2026 even, so. At least the way it's looking at right now, and of course, the feedback from the library board and city council is imperative for informing all of that.
Great. No, I think it's great, it's great, that'd help us too, when it comes to, is knowing in 2027, your capital improvement plan says, I'm making this up, within the technology and everything type thing, and we'll also have from the funding structure, okay? If it's in 2027, what are we going to do in 2026 to get the funding to maintain 2027? Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Jack, I take this as bad criticism, because I like you. We'll take an opportunity sometime offline to go through some of this metrics. How are we measuring success?
So we have an implementation plan where we do have specific, and, you know, that's kind of what I was getting at, too, with, this is really the big bird's eye view more, so everyone understands the priorities, but we do have an implementation plan with specific tactics, which do have more measurable outcomes specifically. It is the earlier part still of our strategic plan, so having that all 100% fleshed out is still not done yet, but I am happy to sit through with you and take whatever feedback you have and share what measurables we do have for that.
As I'm going through your list of objectives, I'm struggling with how I'm going to measure that that's where we are with and how we succeed. So I'd like to see some, how we can measure your progress. Second thing, comment, I think you're conservative. I think you should think big. He says capital neutral. I don't like capital neutral, because there's a lot, no, there's seriously a lot of grants and money out there. Do we go after grants?
We haven't had a huge need since the time I've been here for it, but absolutely, for these bigger projects, I would certainly want to pursue that.
So I think we should think big. I always, I always think the library in a community or in the university is like the hub of knowledge. That's many of the universities are calling it information commons, or, you know, it's the information hub, right? And it's a way not only for people to get information, but to connect with the world. And I'd like to see some better visioning of how we, how we're going to connect our students, our adults to the globe. So connectivity is important in that. And then the partnerships, I noticed you had on the group that was evaluating this, you know, some of the high school, I think you had high school. How about our local colleges?
You know, we didn't, we didn't include, hopefully they did, you know, we sent the community survey out far and wide, so hopefully we did get a little feedback in there. We definitely prioritize primarily the educational institutions specifically in Rolling Meadows, but that's not to say that as we work through this plan, you know, those like Harper is certainly a community partner, you know, we do the Harper Promise program with the high school as well, but that doesn't mean just because they weren't specifically at the table in the steering committee level, that, that excludes them from partnering and us partnering with them, just going forward generally. So absolutely, you know, that's something we'd be eager to do.
So if I was, if I was to go and look, so my alma mater is our University of Illinois, this is yours.
As is mine.
As is yours. And they have a great library program down there, by the way. And Loyal University, and if I call there and say I'm looking for something specifically, they get back to you right away, and they can deliver it within a day. Can we do that?
The answer's no, although I will say, the consortium concept, it sounds kind of vague on paper, that would really make getting materials from around the state and around, actually, specifically in the area, it would just completely multiply exponentially the amount of materials people could easily get. So a day, probably not, but within three days, much, much more, and that would really help us.
That's very important. Focus on that consortium, how to network with the other universities, and I'm thinking more of the college-level connections to this. We focus a lot on the youth and stuff like that, but how do I connect our colleges to connect with our library as a local resource as more and more students are doing home study and remote learning? It'd be a great resource for that, so think big, expand the thoughts, and expand your capital thoughts. Seriously.
Thank you.
Good.
Yes, Alderman McHale.
Yes, I think this is a very exciting time for the library, and you did an excellent job. I want to know who's going to ride the bike in the parade?
We'll have to draw sticks, sir. We'll see. We first have to get it under our roof, and then we're going to, you know, kick the tires a little bit.
Yes, we'll have to do some working out.
Actually, it is, we did order an eAssist bike, actually, so it should broaden the amount of people who would be able to support that.
Well, thank you. Nice job. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Beyer at this time? Yes?
I honestly don't hope to ignore this answer, but do we, I love the consortium idea, I really do, because it just opens up everything. Do we know what items people search for that we don't have? Like if I put in something and we don't have it, like through search engine optimization, and this is probably a question for you, I suppose, I'm going to agree with you.
No, you know, I think I...
Are you looking for that we don't have?
Because, you know, one large element of the library is privacy, like we could potentially track that, but we, we don't, you know, so it is through like requesting materials, we have forums where people can request things, and then we just look at trends of what has circulated, you know, what type of material has circulated, what like, you know, Dewey Decimal Range and that sort of thing, and purchase accordingly. But you're right, it is kind of a gap when you, you don't have that material and someone doesn't find it, and they just say, okay, I guess I'll buy that or something. So to actually have that in your catalog accessible, I think is really important, and that, that can further inform how we want to guide our specific collection, but then also, it just generally saves people money when they don't go out and buy it, they request it from Palatine or Mount Prospect or something like that.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, James.
So at this time, we will be getting prepared for our second item this evening. Our second item this evening is regard, in regards to the continuing discussion of the grocery tax within the state of Illinois here in the City of Rolling Meadows. And to help us discuss that topic, we'll begin with our Director of Finance, Melli Tockington, who has a presentation for us on the subject.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're talking about grocery tax, and really an implementation of a local grocery tax. So what's the current state of the grocery tax? It's a statewide tax right now. The state actually is the one that administers for us, they collect the tax, and they remit it back to the, the local governments. Now, they've repealed that tax at the state level effective January 1st, 2026. So what does it impact? It impacts the city of a loss of our current revenue, about $500,000 annually. And then there's a risk to the service disruption, right? That would be some, you know, we'd have to look at our services and see what we could do without replacing that tax. So the local grocery tax to me is, I like to call it a replacement tax, right? We're replacing the one that the state's repealing. So what is the grocery tax, right? You walk into the grocery store, or at least this is how I think, and you think, everything you put in your cart is grocery. Well, that's not the case. If you are going to buy chicken, and you're going to take it and make it at home, then the chicken's grocery, right? So if you think about what a grocery is, it's your staple foods that you take from the grocery store and you prepare them yourselves at home, or at a friend's house, wherever you want to prepare, but not at the grocery store. That is the 1% grocery tax. If you're running into the grocery store like me a lot, I will go in and get soup, or we have good fried chicken at one of our locations, you can get it, but they've prepared it? That gets actually the city's sales tax, so that's the 10 and 1/4% tax. They are not considered grocery, because it's prepared onsite there, so it's not a grocery. That's also for things with high sugar content, so if you want to run in and buy a pop, that's not a grocery. So, and, and your other staples for the household, like toilet paper or paper towels, those are not grocery. Those just get the regular sales tax. So groceries, really those essential items that you buy at the grocery store to take home to prepare yourselves. So in total, for the city, it's about a half a million dollars of what would impact us with that tax going away and no replacement. The state did add a taxing authority for local governments to apply their own grocery tax, and the earliest effective date would be January 1st, 2026. So essentially, the state would stop at the end, very last, you know, 11:59, December 31st, and we'd kick in right at the night on January 1st, 2026. And it would continue to be administered by the state of Illinois, so they would still collect it and then remit it back to us. So the process of how the tax is collected and how it gets back to the local government won't change from now to January, if the tax is implemented. So to implement that tax, that's why I said it's like a replacement tax, we're essentially just taking the state's tax and, and then looking to make it our own local tax. We would set it the same exact percent, so it's 1% now, you would keep it at 1%. So that'd be no net increase to our consumers. So whatever you purchased in December would be the same price as you purchased in January with the tax. So regional comparisons, and you know, there's been updates since I put this together, so if you read the Daily Herald, I feel like there's an article every day, but a few communities have already adopted. Oak Brook Terrace, Hoffman Estates is nearby, Westmont, Wheaton, there's others in process where they've gone to council, they're doing their readings or the fact-finding, fact-sharing presentations as well, and some more that are under discussion. So the timeline requirements from the state is really, we need to decide if we want the local tax, and if we do, we need to come back, I will come back to council with an ordinance. Council will have to do the first and second readings of the ordinance, and we'd have to have that signed before October 1st of 2025, because the certified copy needs to go to the state for them to have it in place to implement starting January 1st. So at the end of this presentation, when we talk about whether or not we want the local tax, if you do, I will come back in May with the ordinance for council to review. And that is really my presentation, so any questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, Manager Sabo, go ahead.
Right now, our known anticipated net impact from the elimination of the grocery tax, based on existing conditions, is $500,000. However, we are anticipating the opening of a new grocer as part of the Pacifica redevelopment, so the potential impact may be higher, we just don't know exactly what that number will look like. The other elements I wanted to bring up is that the timing and the reason that we're bringing this to the council right now is that as, even though we're in April, we're already beginning the process to prepare the budget for 2026. And so as we begin determining our revenues as well as our expenditures for the upcoming year, we're seeking council's direction as far as whether or not we should begin working on a budget that includes that grocery tax or not. And so the timing is pertinent to us as we get underway with, with starting to prepare all those different numbers to present to the council about mid to, about quarter two to quarter three of this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. I will also add that, you know, the City of Rolling Meadows has increased its presence in Springfield to be able to have discussions about policy changes like this. And while there's a change at the state level regarding the grocery tax, there ultimately wasn't a replacement that was proposed to municipalities to be able to make this up. That said, both Manager Sabo, myself, and other staff members have continued to make the journey to Springfield regarding other levers to be able to find replacements for changes like this, including the local government distribution fund, percentage changes and increases back to municipalities. So while that is ongoing, there's no guarantee that those levers will change. And so my recommendation for the council this evening is to locally enact the replacement tax, so that there is no change ultimately for our consumers at this point, and that we can continue to fund our services. And as our budgets change going forward and our fiscal outlook changes, we can, we can revisit that, but ultimately, you know, we, we need more than a year to be able to make these kinds of changes to our long-term, long-term financial planning. So with that, what questions do we have from the council for our finance director and team? Yes, Alderman Budmats.
Are there additional costs that are associated with the state collecting this tax on our behalf that were not charged in the past, or is it zero, a net zero loss to us?
It would be net zero. So the state in putting in the legal language and statute for us to do the local grocery tax, the collection and administering from the state remains the same. So I think you're thinking like home rule sales tax, they now have an administrative charge. There's no administrative charge that they've put with the language for this right now. So I don't see that occurring, but it may in the future, but right now, the intention of the state in allowing locals to do it is the exact same way it's collected and handled now, it'll come to us in that same manner, it was just that it switches on who's levying, or, you know, who's authorizing the tax. So it goes from the state authorizing it to the local government authorizing it.
And the only real benefit is, is that a very large politician would be able to say, he lowered the taxes and, and, and we, in fact, raised them back. Is that, is that basically what this is doing? It's making us the bad guy instead of somebody like a governor or somebody?
That could be one interpretation.
It shifted the burden of taxation onto the local governments as opposed to the state. I'm so glad he cut her taxes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
No, I'm in support of his, well, my only question is, I'm assuming the answer is yes, I don't see it happening, but if in time, it would be repealed from like the state level and they would reenact the 1%, it would just take us to repeal our local one, right? So, so residents aren't getting, like right now, it is net neutral, there's no change. I had one resident reach out, and once I explained it to him, I love the word replacement tax, they were totally supportive of it. I just received one question, but in a year, if the state decides to enact it, we can just repeal ours. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Kohler.
There's nothing about this I like. It's basically the governor pushing on the municipalities, the burden of saying, there's no difference in the finances, they give back to us, and he was a collector, but he's putting on us the burden of saying, I, and the reason he implemented it was because the cost of groceries was going up, I believe he started this discussion in COVID timeframe. And I know our local state representatives are out bragging about how they eliminated the state tax on it, but they know this is going back on the municipalities. Is, you showed a list here of municipalities that are neighbors. What's Chicago doing?
You know, I don't know. I didn't look up Chicago. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
The big giants in all this, and if we're half a million, they're probably in the millions of dollars of loss of revenue for municipal government that is already under water, right? So I'm curious how many percentage-wise of municipalities are doing this, if this is just an obnoxious, literally is an obnoxious thing here of the state pushing back on us. So I'm annoyed by it. The reason we did this is because inflation... The reason we did this is because inflation and all that. I don't know if that burden's gone away that we think our residents are going to say, oh yeah, we can tolerate this. Last thing I'm going to say is question, what is $500,000 percentage of our budget if we lost?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, Rob, do you have that? Can you look really quickly? Thank you.
I'm taking it off the total budget.
That's right.
So it's about, uh, off of the complete citywide budget, which is about an $80 million budget. It's, uh, uh, 0.6%, point, 0.6% of the entire budget. Now that would, this would come out in general fund, so I don't have the total general fund budget number. Um, that number would be a higher percentage based on the fact that it's funding our general fund. And the 80 million dollars includes pension funds and all of the other enterprise funds as well.
Do municipalities are allowed to raise their local draw a certain percentage every year?
No, the state statute caps it at 1%. And actually, the way the state statute was written is you can't even be less than 1%. The only option available to you as a municipality is that either you're adopting the replacement of the 1% or you're not. That you can't do half a percent or quarters, it's 1%.
I, I got that. Now I'm saying is that every year the city is allowed to raise the real estate taxes, our portion of the real estate tax, a certain percent. There's a little cap on that too, right?
There's the property tax extension limitation law, which sets certain limitations for non-home rule communities as well as other taxing districts. As a home rule community, there is no cap.
Okay, so we could put in a small percentage increase to cover this on the annual increase of real estate taxes.
Yeah, theoretically as a, as a mechanism, you could, you could, instead of having the grocery tax, utilize the property tax. But in that case, I think the contextual difference is that the grocery tax is a replacement. That's how we've framed it. That's how the communities that are moving forward with it are, are looking at it is that it is replacing an existing tax that the state is saying, we're shifting the burden out of municipalities to make this decision. So we could put it on the property tax or you could keep it on the, uh, yeah, on the, on the, on the grocery tax replacements.
Actually, can I add to that too? So part of, when you look at kind of the whole picture of our revenue, we try to have, you know, we talk about it in the budget, a diverse revenue stream. So this one actually kind of helps keep a little bit more in, um, I'd say more of the, actually our volatile revenues, right? Because sales taxes and grocery taxes, they fluctuate faster with the economy. Shifting it to property tax is a much slower reaction to the economy. So they function in different ways. But we have a pretty good balance where we're at right now. So if you want, if we're going to shift that way, it would change how our revenues flow and come into the budget and then how we spend it. But the, it's always worth looking at all different revenue options. Um, but this one I was kind of keeping in that is a replacement of what exists right now. And it's staying in that more, um, economic variable kind of revenue category, which in times of COVID, you know, it was, we see a downturn. But you also are going to see an upturn when we have a higher economic, you know, time. And when we have new development coming in that potentially also has groceries. So we can probably capture more volume that way, how this base, revenue basis established.
Yeah, I, I get that. I'm just, my concern is not what we can get, but what our residents are giving. And that's, and we hide these taxes all over the place and gasoline tax, you know, road tax. And there's so many different places our residents are spending money.
And the, yeah, and the other part of this one is not only residents. So the property tax is strictly residents, right? I literally, I think, spend at least 50% of my household grocery income right here in town because it's so easy for me at lunch. So you are gaining from me spending money at your grocery stores, right? Because I don't live in town. So you are picking up visitors as well, especially in our, you know, kind of triangle at Gulf and Algonquin. You pick up a lot of visitors in that area that contribute to this tax that would not if it's on the property tax.
I did last comment, Mayor. I'd be very curious, as we move through this process, as you're getting that list up there, as to what percentage of the state is just basically going to say, let's go. If 95% of the state says they're going to do this, then yeah, makes sense. But if this is not a big thing, everybody's convinced that we're the bad and they're the good.
I think I've only seen one community that has, I just can't think of which one it is. Stream what is not doing it.
I don't have the reason for it. I, I will say in, in communicating at the Northwest Municipal Conference amongst our peers in the Northwest suburbs, um, by and large, all of them are, are planning on enacting.
Yeah, I think the Daily Herald may have been today.
Alderman Coler, I'll also just state that both Manager Sabo and I, we were members of the Northwest Municipal Conference that lobbied on behalf of including this language so that we would at least have the opportunity to replace it. So from a, the city's standpoint, we are, um, aligned with, uh, other municipalities that will be adopting this as well.
The Daily Herald, by the way, did have, was it today? You're shaking your head.
Recently, yeah.
Of all the municipalities that are on the tables.
And I did run a quick calculation while we, while our finance director was talking. It's 1.3% of our general fund revenue, um, under our 2025 budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Just to answer Alderman Coler's, because we were Googling real quick. The city of Chicago has not voted yet, but they would lose $80 million if they don't vote to include this. And so far, 50 communities across the entire state, and here's the math, have already voted to keep the replacement tax. So this is something that statewide communities seem to be jumping on board with.
50 is trivial. There's 400 in there.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a start. There's only 50 that have.
That's what I said, let's, I want to see, thank you.
We'll include an updated list in our, uh, council action summary when this comes back.
Okay, thank you. And because if there are no other questions about, um, the replacement tax or any other comments, I will request a straw vote because, uh, staff need direction on whether or not to produce a, uh, a ordinance for us for our May items. So are there, before we do that, are there any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, in that case then, uh, please raise your hand if you are in favor of, um, enacting the replacement tax in order to be able to plug this administrative hole. Okay, you've got six in favor and one against, so.
Epstein, Epstein, not against.
So we will see, uh, we will see this then, uh, the May, uh, council meeting for the first draft. And we'll also see then an updated list as well of municipalities that have adopted it as of that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned at 7:52 PM.